Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Trustee's mission statement, please.
Certainly. Oh, that's a roundtable here. Lakeland High School District Board of Trustees is an elected body of community members committed to serving with honesty and integrity, nurturing a relationship of trust. We hear the voice of our constituents and represent the views of our district. We provide oversight of taxpayer funds through fiscal accountability. We govern through developing, upholding, and advancing policy for the purpose of forging an academic consensus. We create and empower will around its citizens while respecting parental authority. We promote individualism, nurture talents, encourage passions, and provide opportunities within the LJST community.
Trustee B, would you like reading the district mission statement?
Lakeland High School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion about tonight's agenda. Will we approve the agenda as posted? One second. There will be a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to announcements, I'd just like to remind everyone that this is our business board meeting. It's a meeting called "In Public," it was not a public board meeting. Do we have any public? Moving on to action items, we have the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the previous meetings, HR items, and corrections. So, I always break these out. Do we have any comments or concerns on the minutes as presented? We have quite a few of them to review. There was, I did have one. Okay, on the 9/13, or 9/... yeah, sorry, the 9/9 regular board meeting minutes, we did the rap, go to police MOU at the very front, and you've got all the notes up there. But then when we come down to I-10, we've got the MOU highlighted there again. So what I was curious is if we could put some notation to direct somebody reviewing this where they can find that information? Because it kind of looks like we didn't talk about it. Even though we already did, but it was just in the very front of the meeting. So maybe just put a note there. Redirecting them up to G or something, but that was it. I appreciate the detail on the minutes. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any comments or questions to discuss on the minutes?
Yeah, they were, I did appreciate the detail. I guess I'm just used to the other format. But did I use the word "tapped"?
In which units?
In the, in the, I think it was the emergency, I mean, I-10, but I'm fine with the minutes.
Okay, so I think I said "reached into the pockets." But it looks like we can look back, but I have no other corrections to that. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion regarding the minutes of the previous meetings.
I'll make a motion regarding the minutes of the previous meeting.
One second, that motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the HR items. We have the HR MO and three letters of reservations. And a correction to the federal programs director letter of intent. Do we have any questions about any of those items? All that, one question. Here's the correction to the federal program director's letter of intent. Should that be its own motion? These are both apart. All right, so there's no, I'm sorry, do anybody have any questions or comments on the, on the reservations? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the HR items. We approve the HR items as presented. One second, I'll make a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the correction to the federal programs director letter of intent. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? Or do we need to hear from Director HR, Director Penney? I'll entertain a motion regarding the... I do have one comment I think is good for the public or anybody that might come back and review the video, that they understand that nothing changed from the previous budgeted funds for the position, that it's just basically language slop is all it is. So that they, you know, they don't... That it's just language. Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, yeah, there was, there's, it was just a slight oversight, excuse me, just correcting it. All right, so I'll entertain a motion regarding the correction to the federal program director's letter of intent. We approve the correction to the federal programs director's letter of intent as presented. Hearing no motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the report agenda, we have staff reports, the first report coming from Dr. Pasley and Miss Sexton on Constitution Day.
So as promised, we have some students with us tonight to share with the board some of what they learned last week about our US Constitution in honor of Constitution Day, which was on September 17th. And so Dr. Pasley and I had just some pictures that we wanted to share with you of some learning that was happening in classrooms about the Constitution. This is for multiple buildings, so you just have a wide array of kind of whatever we did.
You know, today is a very special day. It's National Constitution Day. And on this day, in 1787, the Constitution of America was signed. Here's a brief video explaining the Constitution.
The Constitution provides the framework of the United States government. It also provides the rights and freedoms that America's citizens enjoy today. The Constitution's first three words, "We the people," affirm that the government of the United States exists to serve its citizens. The American Constitution is the first permanent of its kind. It has influenced many nations in the development of their perspective frameworks of government and laws. The Constitution of the United States is on permanent display at the National Archives in Washington DC. The Constitution of the United States has a rich history. Former American President James Madison is known as the father of the Constitution because of his commitment to the attendance and accurate note-taking of America's Constitution. Other founding fathers, including Madison, once scattered in the city of Philadelphia on September the 17th of 1787. The occasion brought the conclusion of the Constitutional Convention. The delegates concluded the Constitutional Convention by signing the document they had created, making it official. Every September 17th in the United States is designated as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. Congress officially designated the holiday on February the 29th, 1952. The purpose of the holiday is to commemorate the signing of the United States Constitution and to honor America's citizens. Publicly funded American educational institutions and federal agencies provide educational information, teaching, reviewing, and reflecting upon the history of the American Constitution. People commemorate the holiday and America's Constitution by attending local events, marking the document's history and importance. Americans spend the holiday reflecting upon the Constitution's importance to the entire nation. Parades and demonstrations are held to promote the freedoms guaranteed within America's Constitution. In the event, the Constitution Day falls on a weekend or concurrently with another holiday. Educational institutions and federal agencies observe the holiday in the next available weekend.
Make sure to have a great Constitution Day.
We want to introduce some of our guests today.
Thank you, trustees. I have a pleasure to introduce you to fifth graders from Mr. Edelwood's classroom. This is Kelsey Jezek and Cameron Ryan, and they are going to talk to you about what they did in Mr. Edelwood's class on that given day.
All right, so this is what we did in Mr. Edelwood's class on Constitution Day.
They played bingo. That's one of the bingo sheets.
Here are a couple of pictures of us playing bingo.
The questions were basically describing an amendment, and we had to answer the questions. We did a Constitution Day word search. That's one of the papers. The words were like a lot.
We read an article that had all the amendments, and here are the verse two, which are freedom of religion and speech and the right to bear arms.
Next, we have two lovely ladies from Lakeland High School. They have a, also have a little. Maybe the other thing we'd like to share, so I'm going to let you introduce yourselves.
I'm Madison Weetaw.
I'm Jenna Kalbaugh. We're from Lakeland High School. And we came here to share with you guys a little bit about what our school did for Constitution Day. In Mr. King's poli sci class, we learned about the Constitution last Friday. And we just learned like the preamble and everything like that. But since poli sci is only a senior class, we decided to think of a way that we could involve the entire student body. So in order to inform the whole student body, our daily broadcasting video, Hello Hawks, it plays every day in second period, and it plays for all the students at the high school. We worked together with the students in the Hello Hawks class and Mrs. Noel, the teacher, to make a video to inform everyone in a fun way.
Possibly part of it. "We the people of the United States of America," that's all I know.
No, I cannot.
No. No, I cannot.
All right, can you guys state the preamble to the Constitution?
"We the people" "of the United States." "We the people" "of the United States."
No, I definitely cannot state the preamble to the Constitution. I have to admit it. I haven't taught a history class in a long time.
No. No.
"We the people," in order to form a more perfect union? "We the people of the United States of America." Yep.
"We the people of the United States of America," in order to form a more perfect union. I don't remember the rest. I was supposed to learn that.
Can you state the preamble to the Constitution?
I can say every word. "We the people of the United States."
"In order to form a more perfect union."
"Establish justice."
"Ensure that domestic tranquility." "Provide for the common defense."
"Promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity."
"Dordain." "And establish."
"This Constitution for the United States of America." "Have the Constitution Day."
Sounds like something you need to pay more attention in government class.
So also along with that little Hello Hawks video that broadcasted to our whole school, all of the government classes actually got like a little pamphlet of the Constitution. And these are donated by the Keweenaw County Republican Women. So it's kind of like nice when I hear like Mr. Kitty talking about the Constitution to actually have something to reference. I thought it was cool that we actually got our whole student body involved. And I'm excited that we got to think of a fun way to do it and have our whole student body get involved in everything. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for allowing us the time to bring our special guests in.
Well, thank you, ladies. It was my pleasure. Thank you for having me. Next up is the not popular...
I really like this design because it feels a little mathy and data-driven, so. But this is our K-3 mathematics instructional materials curricular advisory committee. We sent the first thing to parents in June, trying to get as many parents as we could get involved, and so... So this is the team members thus far. I've had a few additional parents call. At this point, anybody that's willing to participate, we're letting them come on. We want as many volunteers as we can. So we have four parents, seven parent-teacher dual roles, eighteen kinder through fifth grade teachers, ten sixth through eight rebuilding administrators, and fifteen administrators. So quite a lot of people. We are super excited about starting this. We've just been looking at programs and curriculum and just getting ideas. So our first meeting is scheduled for, oh, these are our three pilots for kinder and for sixth through eight. So I-Ready, Illustrated Math, Eureka Math, and then for sixth through eight, I-Ready, Discovery, and Mid-School Math. So we really tried to make it so that we have the same number of participants. So we have six teachers participating in I-Ready, K-3-5, we have six in Eureka, six in Illustrated Math, and then you distributed.
We have, we tried, best of our ability, to have one, at least one person per, by grade level for each of those. So a six, seventh, and eighth for I-Ready, six, seventh, and eighth for Discovery, and six, seventh, and eighth for Mid-School Math. It didn't work out quite that way because it's such a small team, and they really kind of desire to be, have a partner to pilot with so that they have somebody to talk to. So one of those programs does not have, I think it's Discovery Education, at the seventh grade level, sixth grade. And we have one that's not covered, but the seventh grade teachers are participating in the other two. So we have good representation, but it's just a smaller group.
And our first meeting will be here on Tuesday, so everybody is welcome to come. And the idea is that we'll just start looking at all of the programs, getting feedback from the teachers, and then start interviewing kind of the process that we'll go through before we make that recommendation to you. And then it's been our intent that we, each month, we will bring an update to the board as to the data that we're collecting and just the activity.
Tonight is only one topic, and it is the operational plan update. So the parents subcommittee, we met last week. We've got two meetings so far. And they are collecting feedback from every school, so they're getting all their feedback. And they've got quite a bit of feedback. And the next meeting, I put the agenda in there, is next Wednesday. Our goal is to utilize that parent input to make recommendations to the board on the flow chart for the board on the October 14th meeting. So that's the intention of the, why behind us getting together. Any questions about that? I did notice on your, on your agenda that there was... Oh, that tracking cases, you know, for the parents. So are we now tracking the COVID cases or no, we're going to do contact tracing? So it's the last board meeting, the board asked that the parent committee make a recommendation. The committee need members that we had recommended we did not track it. So that will come when they come on October 14th. We're going to have parents come and be here to present. Instead of me, I'd like them to come, so make sure we're volunteers for that. But then that would be part of our presentation, is that they would recommend that we don't track it. Oh, okay. And the reason why is they don't feel like they're valid numbers. There's people that are out, we're not doing contact tracing. And so we can track numbers, but they don't feel like they will be, this group feels like it will not be legitimate numbers. Okay. Reporting, and so there wouldn't be authentic numbers to give the patrons. The way that, right now, the parents aren't able to track at their school is when there's a case, then the principals are sending home an email to them. And so that's how they're getting notification that there's a case at their school. Yeah, I was just curious about that. Yeah, so that's the recommendation, except for they want to bring that to the board when they come on October 14th. Okay. And there really is, Corlin is tracking the numbers, and there are very few other, as far as having an official website with the tracking numbers. Not a lot of other districts that are doing that. I'd like to recognize and thank these folks, these parents that are in the green. They have, they graciously volunteered. They have gone out of the lot. They put their private emails out there. Some of them put their cell phone numbers for texting, and all of them were open to gathering and feedback. And as you know, Lakeland High School's a big school, Lakeland Middle School, it's like they're big schools, with a lot of different perspectives, so they have received quite a bit of feedback from parents. So I'd just like to publicly thank these folks, and hopefully they'll be coming next board meeting, at least some of them to be able to present to you. So I'd like to thank those people for being willing to be on the front line. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So the last thing is the operational plan. These are the suggestions that they have. As last year when we did suggestions, they will be in that bright green. The deadline to turn in this safely, I'll show you at the very bottom, but the deadline to turn in the return to checklist, the safe return to in-school checklist that the superintendent and the board chair are required to sign if we turn this in to be eligible for the RFPs, or $3 for our district is October 5th. So this is the last meeting for that kind of, and we've been allocated $5.8 million. So the parent committee obviously feels like that is important. The items that we needed to add are down here at the bottom. So just going through, so people can see, there's been no updates until we get down here. So this is one thing that they would like the board to approve. And can you see that? Okay? I'm going to read it out loud, just so that folks, if they can't see it, can hear it. And this is the parent committee, subcommittee recommendations. Superintendent or designee will maintain proactive communication with the parents and staff with any building or classroom in which the possibility of a temporary closure and shift to online learning due to a lack of staffing stemming from increased cases of COVID, while maintaining confidentiality as required by FERPA and HIPAA and ADA. So really what that's saying, that it's kind of a wrong, I know it's a wrong sentence, but they were just trying, we're just trying to all get it into one sentence. What it's really saying is they would really like the district to be proactive in saying, we're starting to get a lot of cases. This is a consideration that we might have to do something different at that school. Maybe a certain classroom, or maybe out of school. St. Mary's School District has, she texted us, and they did shut down from now, from September 22nd to October 8th. They shut down because of the number of staff that wasn't available to be, to teach the kids. And then Fire School District down south shut down today. Those two school districts so far. So this, they would ask that this, the board, would consider this being added to our plan. And then down at the bottom, the other two pieces are the LEA, our S.R. Use of Funds, and the Safe Return to School in Person Instruction. So all, these are checklists that are required by the state to turn in. And it says, how are we going to, what's the timeline for engaging meaningful consultation with all the stakeholders? So you can see it's very short wording, just about getting parent input. And the parents could certainly give input and feedback on the operational plans. And that we did have open surveys for staff and parents to give feedback anonymously to the board. And the funds will be used for disinfectant cleaning and social, hopefully maintaining social distancing is appropriate when space provided. And that we're getting feedback about the Safe Return Flow Chart. And this one just talks about the academics for students with learning loss. We're going to address that in each building. That we have will continue for the mental well-being. It will continue with heritage health, and school counselors will be able to support students. And we have free meals, breakfast and lunch for all families. The USDA, and then staff has, continues to have six free counseling sessions. And they will continue to do intensive cleaning when need be. And then it says, how will you spend the remaining dollars? Really looking at unfinished learning and learning loss programs. We have a lot going on with our MTSS, looking at our skill gaps that we've previously mentioned to the board. Healthy, clean schools, given clean priority. We talked about. This building admin along counselors will just reassess the kids at the end of the year to see if students need summer school or their jumpstart program to reassess the learning gaps. And then the last thing is that we are using the I ready, which we already discussed before and at our board workshop. Monday night that we're using the I ready, you know, like that benchmarks to assess and using the MTSS program, which is multi-tiered systems of support on how we support kids with unfinished learning and if there's still skill gaps after we've addressed those. How are you going to address the next summer, K through 12? So that's what this is with the learning loss and that requires a signature. And then the other one is the checklist. This is, I've looked at this as just simply a checklist saying that in our plan, we have addressed all of the CDC guidelines. It doesn't mean that we have to follow the CDC guidelines. It just says in our plan, it has to address what our district thinks about each of these things. So in our current. Adopted plan that the board has approved, we've addressed all of these in there, one way or another. So I was able to write yes on all of these and. With those, what I just went through with you and we're able to assure yes. And then this would be showing that we have already had a plan in place that was approved last year. And so. Those two things. Are recommended to, for the board to approve its sound on the action items so that we are eligible for the RPSR $3 for our district. So those are the only changes we made, those three changes and I, were the only changes that we made to the plan for this time around. So questions on either this recommendation or the two plans, the two forms.
Is there a discussion had about kind of what we had talked about in the past of possible vaccine mandates and things like that with the parents in this group? And how did that discussion go? What were their thoughts on that?
We didn't go into, we didn't go into a deep, we didn't really go into a discussion about vaccines. Because when I did a follow up with the attorney that did the presentation. Said that that was not going to be required, like they, we absolutely would not be required to do vaccines. I have been in writing and I feel confident that we are not going to be required to do vaccines. We already have, have one federal funds, we have, I don't know, two federal funds, we have RB, students with disability funds. We have SRA one funds that we've taken, we have SRA two funds that we've taken. So if anything was to come down with the federal government, it would already be coming, we've already spent. All of that, those, not all, but several of those funds. So having our best of three funds is going to be in line with that. So our recommendation is that we. Definitely sign this and put it in, have the funds coming to our district.
I just hope that I, so you hadn't had a big discussion about the vaccines. Do you feel aware that that could, I mean, it's probably not going to happen, but if it does, we all know how fun surprises are, especially one like that. And I think that they need to be aware that that could happen, it's probably not going to, but you know, we also didn't think that we were going to have a national, you know, mandate, vaccine mandate either in here. We are facing that, so just, just wanted to be forward thinking because I think that would. Be something that they will want to consider.
I, I don't feel confident in my ability to tell them that it may be coming. Because the attorney that I talked to said that that is not part of what's coming. As long as we address, in the attorney's point of view, and this is all new information problems, but as long as we address within checklist, the pieces, we put it out there, it says that you have to make sure that your community knows about the vaccine. We put it out there, we worked with the LEA when it first came and we said, we would let teachers go, cover their classrooms if they wanted to go get the vaccine. And when they first came out, that's how we help support if, if people want to do it, we didn't force anything, we didn't ask for signups like some districts did, we didn't want to be into their business about it, so we didn't ask any of that. And I don't, I don't feel confident in it all getting me being saying whether it could possibly come down because you're right. Things are coming down that I would not have guessed myself, hence why I don't want to be in a place where I'm telling the families, it's coming down or not coming down, I'm just going to say this is the information that I have from the attorney that, that is representing the state. And so. I just would hate to not. At least, I mean, even if we find out later and we, I just would hate to not have our paperwork in by the deadline and miss the opportunity. To utilize that money because as Mr. Wallace said last board meeting, one of our fears is that. Legislators have said. You have this money, so they, it could quite possibly being, again, I can't, I don't know, first of all, but there could be more holdbacks for funds based on, this is how the districts are doing this SRA free fund. So if they, if we don't put our name in to be eligible for the money and they do do a holdback, we would be. As of right now, we'd be the only district that was not putting our name in to have for the, this, be eligible for the SRA free funds. And I would hate. For them to do a holdback and we didn't have this money. It's a lot of money, 5.8 million is a lot. I mean, 20% of that must be used on learning loss, which, you know, we did, we do have plans for our kiddos for learning loss that we do. Tracking each individual student and of where those gaps are. So my recommendation is definitely that the board vote on this when we get to the action items and that we do vote. It says clearly in our plan, yeah. Nothing about masks are not recommended, we said they're available in the office, that's what our plan is. The plan looks fine for them, so I think we're, I think we're good for right now to put it in so that we at least have our name to be eligible for it. That's my recommendation.
Thank you. I just am curious on the operational plan that was presented before us, was concerned really like was all the language that was required to be there for the RPSR free funds, but we took it all out and now it sounds as if we didn't need that language.
No, it's, it's here, this is the, this is, it's in here. So. The language that is in here that we needed. For the specific piece, the active academics and activities is right here. And this is the piece that we had read before about the unfinished learning, the learning loss procedures for students with disability in 504s. And the social, emotional, mental health, this is the federal government's word, social, emotional, mental health, health and safety, child nutrition. We just said we will continue to contract with heritage health, which we already do. And then the school-based counselors will be providing the things they already provide, Rachel's challenge, sources of strength and second step. And then also we will do the cleaning procedures and the child nutrition waiver that we have free. So this is, and then what are we going to do for staff? And here is, continue to do what we already do is provide the six sessions. And make sure the staff feels that we're supporting them in the work environment and helping to clean. So this is the requirement, these are the requirements right in this section. And the other requirements, we do not need to require masks. Part that I put, that we offered support for the teachers who wanted to go get vaccinated, that was, that is good enough. They said that part is completely good enough for our plan to go in as it is.
Okay, I know, but my comment was not so much that the language is completely disappeared. Cause I did realize it was in this tablet, but on our thingy, it was on the thingy, on the actual operational plan. And we took it all out.
Yes, we did.
Right, and so it was my understanding that on the operational plan, the language had to be on the operational plan.
It is fine if it's in this safe return to in-person, cognitive services and this right here, but I just went, as long as it's in there, I checked to make sure. It doesn't have to be up here where it was before. I was just trying to put it all in one document. Earlier and so I don't, if you remember, it was right here under extracurricular before yellow and the board had me take that out. So I took that out. What I'm saying now is if we want to be, sign that form. Here it is, right here, the academics and activities, social, emotional, mental health, health and safety, child nutrition for students and the staff, support for staff, those three items are right here that need to be, would be addressed in, right in here. And that would say assurances is that we are covering that, that we've talked to stakeholders. We are engaging meaningful dialogue every six months to review the plan and that we are providing opportunities for people to access education, students with disability, we're making sure to address their learning gaps and students with 504. And it's publicly available and so we have to sign off on this to be eligible for, to turn this in. But it does not have to be in the actual, here in the plan. All of this right here covers what we need and what the board has already approved.
Moving on to our action items, first action item is curriculum. The elementary supplemental resources for whole court inspiration and the secondary supplemental resources for court inspiration.
Just before you guys. Take action, just wanted to show you kind of what I did. We took off the SEL program and the one that is uploaded for you and I want to change it because that's one that's consistently been with you. But I did on this one, the other thing I did, because it was more for, I had some clarity for all of us of just kind of that process and that timeline, because I was getting with, this is the first reading, you know, just that process. So from here on out, again, I didn't change any of the docs that have already been uploaded to you, but we are going to just know, like, this was the first reading, this was the second reading, this is when you guys would take action, if you decide to take action. If that helps you, I, we can, we can change that, we can leave it, but this helped me just keep it all organized.
Comments, conversation or discussion on the elementary or secondary supplemental resources?
So the social, emotional learning stuff has been moved on.
I just didn't want to change that on the report, we didn't, and the form we had, so.
Our authority as presented by Dr. Casslin Sexton with removal of the social, emotional learning elementary curriculum with digital and print SEL lessons.
I second that.
Bring your motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Yes, I'm just, I'll entertain a motion regarding the secondary supplemental resources. Hearing the motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the 2021, 22 continuous improvement plan. Do we have any further discussion, comments or anything regarding to this plan?
Just thank you for bringing that little column, it's great to have that kind of transparency there.
I'm good. I'll entertain a motion on the 2022 continuous improvement plan. That we approved the. Continuous improvement plan dated 09/23/21 is presented. Hearing the motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy 4160, hearing it's right to know notices. The only, so the discussion, but there are highlight marks in the cross reference section. Just so we know, so should this pass before it's uploaded, if those could be removed. Does anybody have any other discussion, conversation they'd like to have on this policy? I'll entertain the motion on policy maybe 4160, parents right to know.
Any questions? Board policy 4160, parents ready to know notices.
Great motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to renumbering board policy, policy 7010, the federal department and suspension. Policy needs to be renumbered to policy 7455. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? And then I will entertain a motion regarding renumbering of board policy 7010 to 7455. Need to be number, board policy 71, 7010 to policy number 7455.
I'll second that.
Hearing the motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the crisis response plan. Does anyone have any? Discussion, something to discuss regarding?
I'll take a question for the crisis response plan, as presented.
Great motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the Spirit Lake Police Department. Any comments, questions or we can talk out there? I just want to make sure, these can be tailored to the specific departments, correct? They don't have to be universal within all the departments.
Correct. Correct, and when I met with Chief Sanchez, we talked about the MOU we have in place with Rafferty and the MOU we have in place with Coop County. And he. Was not in favor of the, we have to give a year's notice. So, so that's why, so we don't want the language, otherwise the MOUs were almost hidden.
Okay, I just, I noticed that under the obligations, A was changed. From what it was on Rafferty Police and I didn't have a chance to compare it with Coop, so then I thought, well, I'll just ask, do they have to be uniform or?
We're going to work towards uniformity. It's a little bit of work, I think, to make sure that two of the threes are. That would be the goal. So we are, yeah.
Somebody else have any questions or conversations to do? I'll entertain a motion regarding the Spirit Lake Police Department MOU. Move to approve the Spirit Lake Police Department MOU.
I'll second that.
Hearing the motion in the second, on favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the Juul lawsuit, operation. Moving on to the Juul lawsuit, operational plan. Oh, I think we had one, that's okay. Yes, the 2021-22 operational plan, RSRB. Do we have any conversation, discussion we'd like to have on this? We did entertain some discussion during Dr. Meyer's presentation, but is there any more?
I just have a comment. I know that the other federal funds keep getting brought up, but none of them are tied to the CDC guidelines, which are forever changing. And I'm comfortable with, with all the information Dr. Meyer shared in not only her board update, but some of the other things that have changed at the state level with regards to addressing the CDC guidelines and not implementing, which was the word they were using. So I understand Dr. Meyer's point that she had brought up before about putting the district at a disadvantage, especially if the state does look at it and say, you know, you have these funds out there. I'm still hesitant, but I mean, you know, it is where we are, I guess. So I almost think we can trust that those who have in writing confirmed and said, no, this is how it's going to be. We're, you know, going to back the school districts per se, that, you know, local control still, you know, can happen. I'm comfortable with that.
Other things change.
For sure.
Just want to make sure the parents, yeah, the parents knew.
The only thing I would like to ask is if on our website, you could swap out, because we have a very old one that still says it means board approval. Yeah. So I think that could get swapped out.
Yep.
Right. So I want to comment to that. I think most of the other districts too are uploading those documents somewhere.
Sure, we could do that.
In that way, they're just.
They can see last year's and this year's, that what you're.
No, the, what we're actually submitting to the state saying here is the checklist plan.
Oh, yeah, the two pieces.
Yes, yeah, that way they don't have to click the link in the document that these people.
Okay. That would be great. If, if the board approves this, I just want to make sure that they give, the board gives permission, the board chair Thompson, to sign those, because.
The board chair Thompson will not sign without permission.
She, she, let's be honest, the president, she likes to get the board's approval to sign for the board in my working with her in the last couple of years. So I would want to make sure that's clear when we go forward, because it's due by October 1st, that one. So I just want to make sure that everyone's clear. I want to be real clear that I'm not trying to get anything through without the board's permission. So I want to make that clear.
Well, I will move, if we're ready for, I will entertain a motion. I will move to approve the 2021-22 operational plan, RSRB, and provide Chen Thompson permission to sign the document. I'll second that. Hearing the motion in the second, on favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the Juul lawsuit.
Again, I just want to remind her that for the board, this is totally the balls of court completely. I did send the board a page, told you the dates that the attorney gave. So the board can choose to look at this, take time, whatever, not join in at all, whatever we'd like to do. I just wanted to provide it in case you wanted to join in. I didn't want to miss the first one if the board so chooses. And the attorney provided the fourth motion if they so choose.
Dr. Meyer, for public record, could you please review the dates and deadlines that you're recommending? That you're recommending that you brought to us?
So if the district signs on to the class action lawsuit before October 1st, the attorney fees coming out at the end are 25%. If the district signs on between any time in October before November 1st, it's 30%. If it's after November 1st, then it's 35% of the attorney fees.
Do we have some discussion over this, conversations to be had?
I understand the idea behind the class action lawsuit. And I understand that this behavior can be detrimental. However, I don't know if it's the best use of our funds to, it's going to cost us to be a part of it, is that what it is? No, no cost. Okay. They basically want you to sign on, and if they win the lawsuit, the attorney gets the big chunk in the beginning, and then the $2, I don't know how much, but somebody made a joke last time, you find, that's what's, it was, okay. Right, because you work in that industry. So it, I don't think we have to do anything except for provide the data on the, how many people have youth been citation for vaping in our, in our discipline action in our schools. It's all I think we need to prepare.
Okay. With respect to that, how much time do you think we're going to have to spend?
Well, we, we asked Chrissy, she looked at this before when I brought it to the board the first time, and she said, it's not, remember the other class action lawsuit that we didn't have a choice on with the fees? That took her inordinate amount of time every year to do that, like, an inordinate amount of time. She said this one, it's data that we already have, and it will not take a lot of time. I'm not in, I'm not actually, I'm really neutral in this, because I have not been through this before with nicotine. But, so it's totally up to the board. But she said it wouldn't take much time for her to put those stats together.
Respectfully, I mean, if we're expending, I mean, you never know where this is going to go. Number one. And, you know, in the end, all it is, is $25, but we've spent $200 in labor, and in the whole, helping somebody else achieve some goal. And of course, nobody knows. So. We didn't have to do anything. I mean, if it's gathering citation information, I would hope that that would just be something important.
She said she could just pull it down. And it's actually our discipline, face school records that we keep in here.
As you get right, the 25 cents, we're going to get eight of them, maybe, who knows? And it's a coin toss, like.
Tobacco industry, like, they pay per calorie, so I don't know. And, I mean, we. The only advantage of possibly making a decision tonight is that we can say 5%, should we choose to go down this route, otherwise we'd have the opportunity to table it until, you know, we dig a little deeper, but I don't know what there is to make it to. So.
I mean, that's certainly not for marketing tobacco to anybody, much less teenagers. So I certainly think that if there were to be something about why I participate, then it would be something like this, because I certainly don't want to come up with that. Although you bring up a good point of how much of our resources it can take. But it sounds like it's not going to take an inordinate amount, based on the information we readily available anyway. No, no, I guess I would say yes, if I had to make a decision right this minute.
I mean, in the tobacco industry, I have about 500, maybe. I mean, it's just somebody, enny, meeny, miny mode, and these guys got picked, and I'm not interested. I think we can, our own disciplinary actions, and I think we do a good enough job of our local resources, and I think we have other things to do, but that's my opinion. I'm very technical, I mean. That being said, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion at this time. To the Juul lawsuit. I will second that. Hearing the motion in the second, on favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing the motion carries. To the action of the boundary line adjustment resolution.
Madam Chair, the, some of the revisions to the boundary revision resolution have been made, and a few couple of exhibits that were there have been added. Had this a few times, but if there are further questions, any clarification, I'm here to answer questions. Otherwise, other information, the Corolline Board did approve resolution on their end. I believe that.
Night 13, 29.
And that's included right here in the bottom there. Okay.
Can you clarify for me, Mr. Wallace? The fact that we're giving more land than we're getting with the anticipation that the smaller portion that we're getting is going to actually develop more than what we're exchanging. Currently, though, with the loss of tax revenue. Because, well, okay, that's not correct. We're not losing tax revenue. What's happening is the burden of the tax dollars that are coming in are going to be shifted to those that are remaining, because they're going to be removed off those that are leaving. Is that correct?
Correct, but the impact of that is de minimis. I mean, literally, maybe a half penny or less per thousand. I mean, it would, the impact of that, with our total property value of nearing $5 billion in the district now, this transfer really, yes, we are having less right now. I believe when Hayden Canyon, that big development comes in, the value will be more than the land that is being moved. Even though both areas, no doubt, are going to be developed.
Oh, correct.
You know, Hayden Canyon, for sure, is going to be sort of higher end homes. A lot of it, I mean, that, that's the way they've been marketing that development. So I think it's going to be quite a bit of assessed value, and there'll be some there. So, but the impact now, as of today, just because our market value is so big, it really is really little compared to the whole pie.
I'm just cautious, because everything I read about the Hayden Canyon at all, that is not, that it's not going to happen. It's that, how long can it be pushed out? I saw the phase, the first phase, they're doing this green space. So it was like, well, I mean, you know, who knows? I know it's not going to not be developed, but to say whether it's going to develop in 10, 20, 30 years.
And that's true, they have, we have the crystal ball. The other aspect of this that I think is actually more than the property value is really trying to, the boundary as it is drawn now, when it was drawn back in the day, doesn't really make sense. It jigjags, literally, we have houses within a couple hundred yards of Alice Elementary that are in our district, and north of them, they're in Corolline District, and then north of them, again, they're in Lakeland. So the boundary is jigjagged, and if we leave that, eventually then, those parents have another process where they can petition to the state board and say, we want to be the top school right there. And honestly, they'll, we, both boards could say, we don't want that to happen, and the state board can overrule both. And the boundary can be drawn, and usually the state board says, well, what makes sense for the families? And that doesn't make sense. So part of this is we're trying to get the line, as the county's grown, to some arterials. And really, we're drawing at Hayden, will be the north-south of Hutter, which is actually the boundary of Pope's Falls also, with Corolline, if you put it south. So it sort of makes, I mean, sense to people. And you could say, yeah, north of Hayden, and west of Atlas, you're Lakeland. And that's sort of the line. In fact, I saw, I was driving down Hayden this afternoon before I came to the meeting, and saw when we're, buses picking up, that Corolline or us. Kids, those new houses that are just right there north of Hayden, at Vicky's Home. So, you know, we definitely have kids being dropped off right there. So that's our boundary, and that would continue. But, you know, I think it just makes sense, and we're more proactive. Otherwise, I think what will happen over time is then, as subdivisions are developed, it will be a piecemeal approach, and it'll be sort of a hodgepodge, and beneficial to Corolline or.
Any further questions, discussion on this? I don't really think that the future value of that Hayden Canyon area is definitely, makes it make sense to me for us to go ahead.
Because I can think ultimately, we can bounce back and forth on the numbers, but ultimately, like, Mr. Wallace and Sharon, like we spoke about at the meeting, that they already went one time and said, we're going to take this boundary, because you're not playing nice with us, and they got it. And there's nothing to stop them from, they're literally across the street.
Correct.
And in housing development, they can go say, oh, we're, we're done, we're going to take this boundary too.
I'd rather do the swap than have them just take, take it and get nothing in return.
Right. Right, then, I will entertain a motion, thank you, on boundary line adjustment resolution. First of all. I will entertain a motion, and I would recommend that you open the summary of boundary revisions to see what that motion for consideration should contain, if you choose to make that motion.
That the board approved the proposed petition for a boundary revision between the Corolline and Lakeland School District to be submitted, submitted to the State Board of Education for Idaho Code 33307, and authorize the board chair and superintendent to execute all documents pursuant to the request.
I will second that motion. Hearing the motion in the second, on favor, say aye. Aye.
And Chair Thompson, I believe it's a resolution, so that, yes, it would be a roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, the resolution, I should have been separate from the boundary. It's all sorted together.
Yeah, I think so. Typically, all the support documentation sort of follows with the resolution. But with the resolution, it has a roll call.
Thank you.
Chrissy Day?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're saying? Okay. We'll go ahead and we'll vote on the motion. That is a roll call and then we'll entertain a motion on the boundary revision resolution. So we'll do two.
Just your actions.
Um, Chair, it's, we have to.
So the initial one wasn't approved? Was it approval? And we'll do a second one now.
I haven't gotten a second one, first one yet. There's a motion out there. No, we, I did get a second. I'm just, I'm just cautioned, Mr. Wallace, because the motion doesn't state anything about the boundary revision resolution. And that's a specific document. So I don't want to.
Yeah, I think as a, as a technical matter, that when that's on there and a resolution is part of the action item, it just by default, resolutions are roll call vote. I don't think you need to do anything special and you certainly can. But that's, there, there doesn't usually have to be an action item on the support documentation of a resolution. And then on the resolution itself, it usually goes together.
Okay. Then I'll modify my motion.
Thank you, Chair.
Perfect. So I will amend my motion to include approval of the boundary line adjustment resolution as presented. All right. Bring the motion in a second. I'll do a roll call vote.
Christine B.
Yes.
Christine Major. Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Yes. Next item under action is the school bus in the process. Request for proposals, school buses.
And so Chair Thompson, this is, it's typical this time of year, September, sometimes October, where I have our transportation director, Susan Moore, prepare. I work with her on preparing D R F P. This is a similar process we did last year, very similar document, except with the specs and date changes. The process was me, that we had advertised a paper, get the bids back, bring those bids back to the board for, you know, approval. And you're, we're not on the hook on accepting anything yet. We can accept or reject any bids. If we do have, you know, the bids accepted, then the timeline on delivery is probably May or June. That's how long it takes once they get the purchase order. They're about six months out. Last year was actually a little longer because of COVID and everything delayed. But that would be the timeline. Generally, the buses have been costing anywhere from ninety thousand to a hundred thousand per year. We're looking for four buses. And we do have resources in our Transportation Vehicle Fund, the Bus Treatment Fund. So it's not, it's dedicated just for those, this purpose.
So is the seventy-one passenger bus the same price as the forty-passenger bus?
They are both the same size bus, forty-eight passengers, with a special needs bus, which with a wheelchair lift, and so it takes seats away. That's why it's a forty-eight passenger, but it's the same one. And we definitely need two special needs buses and then two regular. And generally, the special needs buses are, will be a little more expensive, not much, usually about four, five thousand dollars more than a regular bus.
Okay. And these are replacement buses or are they in addition to what we have?
No, they're replacement. Yeah, our fleet, we have that right number in our fleet, it's just age. And part of the proposal will be, we ask them to give us a price on, if they'll take our old trading buses. And so we go for the total price, like if something was a better trade than that.
Gotcha. Are there questions? Then we'll go ahead and entertain a motion on the school bus in the process. I'll make a motion to approve the school bus. Second, bring the motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your post. Hearing none, the motion carries. We look to the Cooney Tribe donation, a thousand dollars donated to the Replant Education Fund. This is an annual donation that the tribe does, and then they historically just give it to the Lakeland Education Foundation. So they wanted to give it here or two. And so they just give the donation that they'd like the board to accept the donation to the Radford County part. Half the district. Do we usually have a letter that comes from the tribe? Yeah, we usually do. See a letter issued. All right. There's no further discussion. Then I'll entertain a motion on the Cooney Tribe donation. I move to accept the Cooney Tribe donation. One second. Hearing the motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your post. Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is the operation of online presence. It's put under action because, Christine Major, you wanted to discuss the whole online video in I do. I didn't know if there would be interaction with them, so I appreciate that. I just am a little bit concerned with the YouTube page. When we go to our school board page, it still says for four twenty. It's still not showing the updated dates on there. And then there's two different YouTube pages now. Excuse me, Christine Major, which you are making point of mission, is you are making the statement about the four twenty dates and you reference YouTube. Okay, so on our, on our Lakeland Joint School District website, we have under the Board of Trustees section, so we go to the Board of Trustees to the right of the, of the photos, you will see a twenty twenty-one tab. If you click down on that tab, that's where you should be able to find it.
Can I ask you a question? When you go to this page, right, I, because I got tired of trying to explain myself and being cold like you all the time. I just kept my mouth shut till the meeting. How do you get to that page when you go there? How do you get to the?
How do you do it?
I go up to the top where it says school board. And then I click Board of Trustees underneath that. So you go right here to this link here.
Right.
Board of Trustees.
Right.
Okay. So sometimes some people click this link. Oh, all right, which is a school board page. This link is a cloned page. So what we have is whoever's updating the website needs a little bit more training. Instead of using a single page, what's happening is you have two pages that are supposed to be mirrored information and they're not. So that was my frustration because I too was looking for videos and I was getting screenshots and seeing more explanations. So I didn't say anything until tonight because this is prevalent throughout the whole website.
I got twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yes. So see, this is four twenty, twenty-one, that's the last meeting. And people are mad because it said the board is keeping meetings and are not putting it out there. No, that's not it. And if we come here, there you see, here's our latest meeting. And they roll down. So the problem is, is however these pages were created, it should be a single page. All links should go to the single page instead of continually cloning pages.
And you clicked on twenty twenty and it showed the nine. I think it should.
No, yeah, if you, if you just hover over the school board page, it'll go to the school board page. And the nine twenty-one is there in the twenty twenty-one, which is on top of twenty twenty. But on the other page, it's reversed.
Yeah.
It was a clone, on the clone page.
The clone page is efficient.
It's wrong. So on the clone page, it's wrong. But that's just one of the issues that I have. So when we're done talking about this, we can go further. You finish. Yeah, so the, the point is, is the clone page needs to go away, which should never be cloning a new page. That's bad quality. It, it should be the same page, the same code. It's the tool. I looked at the tool, the tool is probably very it's written for anybody to be able to use that way. Anyways, that's the problem, that's, that's the issue there. So whoever does that, we just need to make sure that there's no cloning happen, happening. And so that all of the data is correct. Because I found that consistently throughout the website is, depending on how people use it, user usability, right? It's part of QA is depending on what you're going to get. So that was the, the one frustration that we were hearing about the videos. But anyways, that was all I had, Christine Major, I didn't mean to interrupt, but you, I was like, oh, yeah.
Yay.
Yes, exactly. Another issue that I have is when we click on that meeting, let me get back to it. There's two different sources, YouTube pages in which we are linked to. And both of them are personal pages of people. And I think that that's, it's really unprofessional. And I think that we need to have a Lakeland page on YouTube because one is on Dane James' page and one is on Chrissy Lilian's page. And I, and I don't think that's appropriate, especially with. Yeah. So, and I felt a little discouraged when the board had their meeting and the levy was, the emergency levy was discussed. That when there was the, that that was posted on Chrissy's page. And then when we had the Monday meeting, where we had our discussion about how we can make sure that these resources are provided, that was put on another page that nobody knew existed and that nobody could find. And so that looked a little bit deceptive to me, although I'm sure that wasn't the intent. And I thought there was a Lakeland Joint School District page. I think that we actually own one. It's a Lakeland Joint School District page, so.
Yeah, that can be.
And then I'd also like to have some discussion about how that page is managed, maintained, who maintains that? Who uploads the video? I, I have never had the opportunity to view the meetings, upload the meetings personally. I can view them on YouTube, but I don't have anything to do with the uploading management of these videos. These videos have been done by Chrissy or someone at the district. And I just want to make it public record that I don't have any access to them. I couldn't change them if I wanted to. Don't have any passwords. That is hands-off for me. You know, I can't, I can't do any of that. And I don't know if that's a good thing. I don't know. I don't know if, if our clerk should have the board meetings, you know, upload those and have that responsibility? If that's a district responsibility, like, I, I don't know. I would just like to have a discussion about, about that. Who does it and how it's done.
Right.
Who has access?
Is there a protocol, right?
Yeah.
If I can place a general point of information.
That would be great.
There has been discussion between Chrissy, myself, and Dane in regards to trying to merge all of the files to one location. The last communication I received from Dane was that he was having an error in trying to move the information. I have not been able to re-circle with him and Chrissy to try and figure out the challenge as to why they can't move it from Chrissy's page or from Dane's page under a generalized umbrella so that it stays in one spot. So I was, I tried to convey that to the technical bureau, and I, so I'm not a technical bureau. So we are trying to work the issue. So that's really on that part.
Unfortunately, we have a written protocol or procedure with.
Well, I think it, we, I think Janelle and I should follow through, but my understanding would be that it is the clerk's legal responsibility to be in charge of the minutes. So I feel like she should be the one, who the clerk is, should be the only legally responsible, the only person that should be responsible for the minutes, because I don't feel like any of us at the table should be doing. I don't think any of the district, district.
Sure, I do. With all due respect, these videos are not the minutes. They are not the minutes to the meeting. People need to remember that, that our written approved minutes that we approve and make motions on to approve are the official legal meeting minutes. These videos are not minutes to the meeting. So people need to remember that as well.
Yeah, trustee, trustee Bane, you're exactly right. Remember trustee Grissom even at one point, a couple of months ago, said, do we still want to continue doing this because?
It was a COVID thing.
We did it because of COVID and, you know, we didn't, I mean, we couldn't come here. You know, we had to do something. So, and that was also part of, in the AG's open meeting training that he had, it was his main AG and can't remember the name, Betsy Russell. They were even saying in the meeting that now that the governor rescinded, all of his stuff about, you know, being able to hold meetings without having somebody on site and all that, that you know, people needed to really figure out if you're going to keep these records, you know, forever, you're going to stop? What are you going to do? Because, you know, at some point the district would have to, I mean, you know, we.
It doesn't have a record yet.
Yeah.
So it does.
And I think it still does fall under her review.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just saying that it was, if not minutes to the meeting.
Yeah, you're.
But I don't want to modify minutes. I don't want to modify any, I don't even want to upload the videos. I just think that if they're board videos, that it should be handled by the clerk, is what I think should happen. And I think it should be on either a school board, you know, Lakeland two seven two school board YouTube page or a Lakeland two seven two. And I think it, I don't think it should be on a personal page. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
A lot of the other.
Well, I can.
Channel. You know, I, I can't say a lot of them, but there are a few other educational institutions up in that way. It, it's all collectively, whether it's their board meeting or, you know, some presentation by the athletic club or whatever. It's all online.
Which I don't know that I can talk about that. You know, I don't know that I can share that.
Yeah, I don't mind it being a district one, that it needs to be a district one, not a personal.
So, Janelle, can you look into what it will require for? Well, first of all, Dr. Murray thinks we may already have a Lakeland YouTube channel.
I understand there are from the Hayden, so I'm convinced, depending on what organization, so like Lakeland, I think Lakeland High School versus Timberlake versus, so there might, from what I understand, there are several different locations, so I can work with Dane and I should, we have a single, singular collective for district information.
Yeah, because the, the thing here is, it has to be, it can't be on a person, a personal person's, you know, thing you. I think there are legal issues that intertwine with that. There, there's a whole bunch of collusion that for the employee's protection, for the district's protection. We need to just have it under the business. On top of the fact that when people come and go, what happens? So it, it needs to remain Lakeland Joint School Districts channeled and to have the consistency. Or it comes from, I would imagine that the videos have to be on a computer somewhere that Dane could just upload those files from the original computer that you were uploading from, unless they were all deleted, but.
So the files are, are on this?
I'm not sure. But typically, when you upload something to a YouTube channel, you have it stored on a hard drive somewhere, right? It's tell it to go there.
And it's on that.
So I would think that Dane should be able to go into said hard drive and just upload all those videos, right? That we've ever had, and there we go, on to Lakeland, right?
Oh, okay. And then we can cross check and make sure that all videos that exist in all the other places now exist here before the other ones go away, because what if we don't have?
Yeah, that's true. Don't delete those accounts until we make sure that we have them all, right?
Or you can just go get a free tool and download them all.
There you go. That's.
So next two seconds.
So thank you for allowing me to do that. That was getting on my nerves and not being able to, and I'm like, I know we have the meeting. It's been three weeks. Or is it? Oh, it's on the page, surprise, it's Dane.
I never did.
Well, and I always, I mean, because, you know, I'm not the biggest hole in the box sometimes.
And I just go to YouTube and I just type Chrissy's name. I do the same thing.
Doesn't show up. I'm like, oh, it's not there. And I get everything to go back to the district page to go under.
No, it's good that you checked that out. Yeah. So I have it written down and we will follow, Janelle and I will follow with that. It's, it is free to get a YouTube page and I just looked, I cannot find one. So maybe if you don't use it after long, I know my first year we did. I did create one because I did some videos on there, but they maybe haven't used it. They took it away. Cortlande School Districts has their own page with their, their logo and stuff, so probably nice professional looking. So we will follow through with that. And then the cloning business, we will, Janelle and I will find out about that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for looking. Doesn't sound like any action is necessary. Because it is an action item. Do I need to table it or not just let it take action or just no action? Okay, no action. Moving on to the discussion items. First item for discussion is curriculum. You have a first read of supplemental resources for board consideration. And we also have a commentary supplemental resources and a second reading supplemental resources. Oh, those are second.
The dates are there.
Thank you.
Does that help you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And moving forward, we're, unless we were to have them separated, it just makes more sense to us to put everything that would be a first read on that date together instead of having two separate documents.
Yeah, and as long as you differentiate, you know, where they're going, it doesn't matter if it's first or second.
We were just talking about trying to streamline this for you, for us. So this is our first time, you know, going through this process. So I think the dates really help everybody evolve. So we kind of. Yeah, just an idea, maybe like if there's, if there's changes, the first read, second read and action item could be different colors. So then it can show us all the revisions. So I don't know, the first read would be blue. Okay, well, everything that was in the first read would be blue. And then the second read, if it changed anything, the new stuff is in green. And then on the action item, you know, the. I don't know, just an idea, maybe just so that everybody can see the revisions and follow along in what's been revised. And if there's a strike through, then there's a strike through, but we know that was the first read, we did a strike through on it. So my question would be similar to the past doc that we had. If there was a strike through, are you comfortable with me then doing it on this form? The strike through? Mm-hmm. I'd like that. On your, okay. See, okay, this is what we're striking, but you can still see what was there. That's, I think, some of my frustration within Google Docs is that there's no history. So you can't really go back and, and see what you were wanting to begin with. And so then it all disappears and goes away and then you're trying to remember and you can't. So that would kind of maybe keep a record of it so that we could all.
We have essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Please, so do me.
There, there's a lot this year.
But, no, it's, I appreciate it.
I think a lot of support for students with disabilities is.
I mean, yeah.
And it will continue to like come that way just because you get to know our students better and then recognizing that they have greater needs that maybe we don't have. So.
I do have a question on LMS for doing patterns of powers for grades six through eight and grades three through five.
It's SWD, so some of our kids can't access the six through eight, so they have to go to the lower.
Okay, I was just curious why, so.
We don't have thirty, we don't have those.
No.
People in that building that the instructional unit aligns.
But Janelle was just thinking of average students. I'm like, you shouldn't really leave that level. But I didn't know maybe it was for, but yeah, the life skills, life skills, I guess. Thank you for clarifying that.
Very welcome. And then for Mountain View, that 21st century math projects is really just some math. Kind of real world problems that kids can grapple with a little bit.
I wish they had less political topics. Like social media in the era of spring, really gun violence, smoking, I mean, curving footprint. They have some of the apocalypse. Superhero. Disney population.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Of course you would. I mean, some of them are quite interesting, but some of them.
You can definitely see the agenda. It's probably hard to find curriculum these days without it. I was gonna say, it would be really nice if we could just take all politics out of schools. But just historically, schools have been the place where social problems get dealt with. So then it goes back from a very long time. We've just gotten good at finding math and making all of it math.
Wish I could see one of those lessons.
I can follow up with Mr., this came from Mr. Hughes' building. So I could follow up with, with him to see if there's a way for you, for us. Sometimes I must have purchased things. We can't see everything. They'll just give you a preview and then be on that, you're not really going to see more.
Right, you know, I mean, and I don't even mind the previews, I too. Just wants us to log in. It's another one of those logins.
Well, is this the teacher paid to?
Yeah.
Yeah, and teacher paid teachers won't let you access it until you pay for it. Even on the previews? You can't, if you have to have an account. So in some of the free versions of you, if you have an account, you can access it. But if it's a paid version account alone, won't let you access even a preview. How do they even have a preview button? That's so weird, huh? And then sometimes it's just a two-page, which really doesn't tell you anything. So.
Gee.
But.
On the preschool kids, for school curriculum kits, is that disposable?
I don't think so. This would be a Kelsey question. Gee, this is another one.
Is this for? Okay, it doesn't state that at all anywhere. So I just guess, and I was just curious if it was.
Moving up and down, I can't get to it. So some of them probably are disposable, but then some of them are hard read aloud and you have a variety of things. Actually, I have trade books in there. And then you'll attend some tools. And I should say, she's not asking for this entire thing. This is just the link that I put in so you would have a more comprehensive look at the entire thing.
Okay, so she's not asking for the set.
I don't think she's asking for me in the set in its entirety, but that would be a Kelsey question specifically.
Okay, what, it should be on the list of what she's asking.
Does kit? It should not be the entire kit. My understanding was it wasn't all of it, but I could be wrong. Kit for school book.
What I don't mind the kit, I was just curious if it's. If it's all disposable or if it's. I don't know that the math for the wood pieces could be, but there's five of them, so, you know. Questions. Respectfully though, does like purchases for the preschool, is that a consideration of Torvik's budget or does it have its own budget?
It's its own budget.
Okay. Okay. That's another thing we probably need to update. We're so used to saying we have eleven schools, but we actually have thirteen now. Oh, we have preschool in Reach. And we're so used to just looking at the physical building, breaking one of them.
Yes, but I guess the PK is not a separate entity in the state. So they say we have twelve, but it's really thirteen different programs.
And here's the programs that were presented, Lips and the Cape Halls.
Oops.
Oops, yes.
So those bottom two will come October fourteenth, fourteenth.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. And then it's been a process for discussion. Was that just about the dates, et cetera, or is it more?
I think trustee Major had mentioned that she had heard so many feedback from staff about the length of the processing. Yes. How the, my apologies for interjecting, but you had asked about the process by which the teachers get the curriculum approval from the board because there was a.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
It would take a long time.
Yes, I did. Um, yes, I did have that. And I wanted to make sure, you know, they wanted to, you know, charge around Christmas or whatever. They, you know, were able to do that. So. So I think that the dates that Dr. Casement's put on the top of really show our staff the duration of the process. It truly is, it's a month, okay, from start to finish. However, if tomorrow morning we get a request from somebody where it's another two weeks, right, before we can get to the first read. So it could be a total of six weeks for, depending on the timing of when we get the request, in proximity to the next school board meeting. So, and I don't know how much, how much feedback you've gotten from staff. I haven't gotten any at this point. I don't know if Dr. Casel has, but.
If. Everyone's staff, per se. Why is it taking six months to get the curriculum approved?
Yeah, it's not taking six months.
I know that. I don't know if it's being sent to them.
I volunteered after you approved my high school stuff, I immediately sent, that's what I was doing, sending emails to the staff saying this was approved. It went into Skyward and I flipped to proof the PO because it was sitting there waiting. So as soon as you're doing that or you are sending that, I can think.
The only thing that I'm not so concerned about, but I would hope that people, I mean, we're all human. That if a teacher had a need that was like, hey, is there any chance we can speed this process up? That that can be disclosed to us. I mean, it can't happen every single time.
Right.
Because we do have a process. But I also understand that, you know, when you're in the middle of a content or module or something. And it's like, oh no, I really, you know, we want people to understand there's a process. We have a responsibility to everyone within this district, which includes the teachers. So I just would like to put it out there that if there is something that's critical, that that be brought to our attention. So that we maybe realize, hey, we don't need to take this abandoned all the time. We're comfortable with making a recommendation or a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just so they do understand. I mean, I don't want that to be the norm at all. But I also don't want teachers to feel like, well, forget that because now I gotta wait six weeks and it's never going to happen. And I will be from volcanoes to earthquakes and I need this now for my volcano, you know, that.
So if.
And I know teachers, and I don't speak that as everybody flies by the seat of events. I speak that from the fact that I think sometimes things come up because I know teachers are very dedicated to the planning and preparation that they go into what they provide to the students.
But in, Dr. Meyer and I really focus with our teachers on being flexible. So as you're teaching and some of the students are not grasping it the way you taught it, sometimes that requires you to go out, figure out a different way of presenting that material to your kids.
Right.
Three. So, so I completely understand that. So I guess, let me just ask then, if that were the case. Would, would we ask Janelle to put in the, put it in the action item with the, with the notation for the board? That this is the first read, that this is kind of an emergency, just some sort of a notation. So that you know, yes, so that you know, I really need to spend a little bit of time digging into this so that I can feel when I can make a decision when we.
Yes.
That would be one of us.
Okay.
We can list it.
Fast track.
Yes.
I like a little approval.
Okay, and then my other question to you, just because we've been doing this now for a little while. And this process is new this year. Do you feel like it's too much time between, do, like, what, the way we have it set up now is we ran the first read. You have opportunities to ask us some questions and then we come back to the second read and then, and then we go to the approval. Do we, my question to you is, do you feel like you need that second?
Um, I think we need the second read. However, I think the second read could be an action item as we do our board policy. Because we bring it, we discuss it. And then, I mean, worst case, I don't know, I guess worst case scenario, meaning if on the second read, we're like, you know, we still don't have enough information, we just table it for the next meeting.
So we should put it on as an action item.
I would say the second read would be the action.
As the second read. I would agree. I think the teachers will fill out a report by top two. Right. And then it's not quite so redundant for you guys. You really want to.
Break down.
People have to break down our agenda items too, if we're not having to revisit something three times. If we're only visiting it twice and being able to get approval on.
Well, I would say helpful too. Yeah, it just seems like the question should be similar to what we have in board policy is, we bring the first read and then the second time is a go. It was the only, yeah, I would just say if, if something is deeply discussed, then we may need to table it. But I, I can't see in the future. So I would just rather take the second read as an action item. And know that we're going to have conversation, we need more conversation. And that way we're shortening up my two days.
We will, moving forward, that's how we will proceed. Thank you.
One other thing that he brings up, a letter that a teacher did for the kite runner book.
Yes.
Oh. So Ms. Exton shared with me the letter that the teacher came up with for the kite runner book. So that the parents would know that this book was going to be used in the classroom. And we just want to see what the teacher came up with or I saw it. She wrote it to me and I was like, okay. You know, there was a couple of little things, but it was well done.
Yes, so I can, I will do that right now, share that. So that you can see it definitely. I felt like if they heard that the board asked them, they.
And one more thing around the curriculum approval process. We do have a 2540, which is, we just adopted that last year. Anyways, so in the last couple of years. But there's also a procedure that goes with it that we might want to look at to. Through 2540P, that one of the.
This is the policy.
Policy, yeah. So the 2540 addresses selection, adoption and removal of curricular materials and instruction within the district. And then there's a 2540P from ISBA. That is the process on how that happens. Cortlande has one other website, some of the other districts have one other website. So I'm sure they got it from ISBA, so we might include that too. So that, yeah, we have a policy that says that. But like we're discussing tonight, it'd be nice if the procedure was actually outlined so we could write.
I can add that to our policy, Janelle.
Look. I'll let you do it. Better. Yeah. But please put 2540 and 2540P. Because I know some 2540, it doesn't. Because I know some 2540, it doesn't reference 2540.
And I think there were some, I'm gonna have to look at Coolings and, um, they had some other references, some other policies, I don't know if we have, though some of them I think that we do, but, okay, there is a procedure for that, we can make more. I have no discussion on that.
Okay. I do need, I'm curious, it shows that we have first read. Okay, we have for first read, 3525 immunizations proposed new, but then we also have 750 listed at the top, isn't it? And the 750s, the 750s just. I don't think we address that at all, just maybe that we were hoping to get it, because I don't think we, I don't know.
We talked about it in, there was a funding balance, we did talk about it in policy committee, and Portus did send an email, and we didn't, you know, went to, I didn't look at that, but Seifel Wallace did answer so many questions that we had about where the 8.3 and 16.6, how that includes ten months.
Right, right.
That was the question.
Okay.
And I think it was a GFA or GASPIS, one of them.
Yeah, GFoa.
Okay, GFoa was the one that addressed the government home county, so that sort of answered the question that we were talking about. It seemed like there was something else, but I don't really remember what the other one was. Okay, so I think that's probably why it got put in there, because we did have them both as discussing them in policy.
However, the concern with that policy is that the legal, the legal reference is 3381A, and I believe you felt that was an inappropriate citation.
Well, it is inappropriate, because we don't use a complete unbalance according to the statute, right, and then the question was, we were trying to figure out who the auditor was that Dr. Meyer was referring to in minutes, and, and now that I'm thinking back, that Mr. Wallace did guess that she mentioned referring to, but they were a few years back.
It was 2016 or 2018.
Yeah.
The minute she was referring to.
I think it was a state, a state auditor.
I don't have any of this information though, this seems silly to be discussing this tonight, I don't have anything, I don't have the policy, I don't have anything regarding that policy 750 that you guys are going, I mean, this discussion about right now.
Oh, we had the discussion about, you're right, it didn't get put on there, but we had this discussion at the meeting where we did the, the levy, we were gonna talk about the 8.3 and the 16.6 percent and the funding balance, and then in policy committee we asked Janelle to see if she could find out the answers to those questions, and that's where, but we can put it on the, back on the agenda, and, and address it that way, that's.
Well, it's actually on it as a first read, not so, but no changes were made, so I think we need to bring it back up in policy committee, because we do need to make changes in the fact that the legal reference is incorrect, and then we'll bring it back for a first read.
So, again, my apologies, because it is listed under description, and so I put information in the description to try and remind me of things, so it wasn't necessarily meant to be addressed at this meeting unless we came to a resolution within the policy meeting or update, so, I believe this is my error.
No, it's actually mine, because it's not yours, I'm supposed to click this off right here so that the description they can see on their computer and it's not up on the screen, so that was my fault. Thank you. You didn't, your first time by yourself, you did not mess up, it was me.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so there you go. It was not you. Thank you.
So I guess my other question, trustee Bane, is you want us to bring all that back, back to the discussion we did?
Well, yeah, I would prefer that, if that's, you know, if we're actually doing a first read of, of the, that we all have, be able to, I mean, hopefully have a discussion. And if you guys got information from Mr. Wallace regarding that, where are those amounts and percentages, and, I'm a GFoa member, I, I get it, I, I understand, but I want everybody to have the same information that I have a discussion about, so.
Yeah.
So I guess I would prefer.
To your point, trustee Bane, we have talked about that, if the board member asks for something, we're gonna send it to the entire board, not to be discussed, but just that we disseminate, because we're allowed to do that, disseminate information, if one board member asks for something, we're gonna disseminate it to the whole board. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that.
Everybody just has to have the same information, especially if it's something we're voting on, because one person can't have their information that someone else doesn't have, right, that gives them an unfair advantage, so that is imperative, so I really appreciate that.
And I think we've just kind of segued off into.
Yes, okay.
No, I, let me get back up, I would like to explain to you what happened, we did have questions in policy committee, Janelle reached out to Mr. Wallace, Mr. Wallace responded to Janelle, Janelle responded to both of us as members of policy committee, it wasn't about decision making, although it did get presented tonight, so we, we will bring policy 750 back out of the, because there does need to be some changes to that policy, just specific to legal reference, and then we can chit chat about it at that time.
Okay.
Okay. But just so you understand, it wasn't sent to us as trustees, it was sent to us because we're on policy.
Unfortunately, if you guys ever need a break or need help, I'm willing to step in, I know you can't have three, but I'm willing to take one of your places if needed, at a time, or, or a time, or permanent, or whatever you need, so.
Well, we're like, oh, we didn't finish, we did that 25, I was not at this meeting, so trustee Grissom, do you wanna talk to this policy, were there any changes, looks like there's a highlighted yellow section, so that must be newly added from ISBA.
Oh, yes, there was that one, certainly. You were here.
She was, I was.
I was here, but I was not at the meeting.
Yeah. Because it's the communication of immunization requirements and etcetera.
Chrissy, I don't even know. I don't know where it came from, I don't remember that, I thought that's something that you put in there.
It wasn't at the meeting.
So where did, well, refresh my memory, where did this go from?
It's my understanding that at policy committee, not this last week, but the week before last, policy 3525 was brought to the table, there's one revision from ISBA, it's adding the communication of immunization requirements and exemptions.
Right, right, I remember.
And it looks to be just a very long word, oh, there's two sentences there, so there's two sentences, and that's the only correction that's been made to this policy, is my understanding, because there's no, typically, so you all understand, when we make revisions, we will like line up what we're in red, and then I will go back through and make sure, if it's in green, that means it's not the whole policy, we keep it, so that we kinda see what we had and what we need to have, and where to go. At least that's the information I'm trying to get from this trust.
I remember now, what it was, it's a legislative change.
Okay.
Because the legislature changed the statute this year that exemptions, immunization exemptions have to be verbally communicated, and these other have to be verbally communicated and has to be physically, you know, by paper, whatever, any kind of communication that has to do with the immunizations, but specifically verbally communicated, that they have the right to fill out the exemption form, that was the change.
So, do you have any comments or questions for discussion of this? No, I'm just going to the board subcommittee, is budget curriculum policy. Nope, it's under discussion. Chit chat, clarification, all noise. The, we need to get it out there, that we would like to get more parent involvement with policy, and we should have a budget committee and a curriculum committee, by statute, I believe.
Well, we can establish those.
Okay, okay. So that being said, I understand that the poli, the curriculum committee has always been, or not has always been, but since I've been on board. So, I don't know, what I think would be prudent is especially since we are in the process of just approving all these supplementals etcetera, I think there was a committee that could be vetting everything and just say, yeah, this is great, give it to the board, that may also up speed up our process, I don't know, but I do think that it would be prudent to have a curriculum committee. Input from you two?
We will do whatever the board's pleasure is, we certainly can put out an invitation to parents and see if we get any interest, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have to know if there's interest first and foremost.
We just said that the last couple of parent committees have struggled, I think people are just really busy. Oh, yeah. So we certainly can put that out there and, and then work with whomever would be interested to kind of come up with a process, if we're getting information from teachers of like materials and we're going to take it to the board, we certainly could run it up to my home first, and the parent groups can have that, we'll get it. I think that would be. I agree, and just, I mean, we are looking at the curriculum and the teaching perspective than having to do with, I had to raise or funding some of those pieces, so just having a wider scene of input from through the lenses in which it's coming home or they're seeing it, I think would be helpful as well. There are some parents who are on that committee for the operational plan, once that's done, I wonder if they might be interested, or if they're involved, jump up on, you know, being involved, that might be a good transition to them.
Transition to them, right.
Maybe.
I do think there's core people that really wanna be involved, they just necessarily either haven't had the invitation or don't know that they're having. See, Grissom, do you have to speak to this?
No, I think I have in the past.
Yes.
I think the one thing is, and I know that some type of an application process was, yes, started with the other stuff, I think we just, we use the same process, you wanna try it to fit these other, so there's some kind of writing record or something, but it would be a huge help to the board, I know that, huge, you know.
And so I think, I mean, with a budget committee, someone that's helping provide insight and whatnot, if we can get it out there now, policy committee, we'd love more people, like, please, it's, and Aiden's gonna do that too?
Oh, yeah.
Great, yes. Yeah, because it's, it's just a matter of the fact that we have a certain number of policies, several that are outdated, in the sense that they haven't been updated or reviewed in quite some time, not necessarily that there's any changes, but they haven't been looked at, and then we have a whole bunch of policies that we haven't even implemented that we really should, and it all takes time, and so more people that can help, not necessarily speed this process along, but give positive input to move the board, would be great.
We just learned there was actually an update in the fall and an update in the spring that has huge lists of required updates, the policies, so on top of us trying to do what we need to do, to get everything current.
Right.
Caught up and not like all these required assets.
Yep. So, board Jeff Alston for follow up, I think what I heard you saying is, we will solicit patron for policy committee to start with, and then after the operational plan with parents are over, then that, we would ask those parents if they'd like to serve on that, by possibly a budget or curriculum committee. Honestly, I think it should go out there right now, that we are looking for members to be part of a budget of policy and a curriculum committee. Okay.
I mean, you could, are you gonna write a little paragraph for us to send out in the edge blog, that you're interested in having, starting in, coming from the board?
Yeah, we can do that for these committees.
Since it'll be, I think that would be great, and then you're making direct connections with your constituents, and we'll put it out in the edge blog, and then we'll put it on our website, and then, so that would be a good thing if the board wanted to write a little paragraph for us.
Okay, I'm just cautious, because we're all, we're only going after the members of the district, we're not going after all our constituents, so I don't know if there is, I mean, I, I'm just saying, because just going with the parents that are within the district, we are, you know, excluding a significant portion of it.
Oh, I see, so like you're thinking in like in the paper more, so that other people wouldn't have the paper, I mean, at least.
Or, you know, back on the news, or.
Yeah, put it on our Facebook page or website, you know, just kind of put a, it doesn't have to be huge, it doesn't have to be a big, um, novel, it's just, it's a little blurb that we're, we want people to be involved, we want feedback, we want people helping to make these decisions so that we know what they want.
I think they just sound your author for the paragraph right there, it sounded perfect.
It did, it sounded really good.
Good thing it's recorded. Saying exactly the same.
Okay, perfect, so trustee Bane, I will pass you with eleven little paragraphs.
Did you get your mouth?
Wait. All right, perfect, thank you. Next up for our discussion is policy 7110, qualification regarding bills paid prior to board approval, so trustee, CFO Wallace was going to speak to the policy 71.
Yeah, I guess I was just gonna speak to that, you know, regarding the way that checks or warrants are presented to the board, that in policy 7110, the title of that policy is budget implementation and execution, it's a very short policy, it just says, once adopted by the board, the operating budget shall be administered by the superintendent, while actions superintendent needs and executing programs and activities leading into that budget are authorized according to these provisions. Expenditure funds are legal, funds held for contingency may be expended without approval of the board and that, may contingency, that's formal, if you have a, that contingency that trustee Grissom was mentioning, a listing of warrants describing goods and/or services for which payment has been made must be presented for board approval each month, and that purchase shall be made accordingly, requirements of state right on adoptable policy, so it's a very simple policy, and it was adopted 2007, you know, an ISBA policy, it really hasn't, it's pretty standard practice, I think, for most districts across the state.
Right, and I did call ISBA to just, because my biggest, I guess frustration is these procedure of larger purchases, that we're like, whoa, what are we doing, and knowing that we have the, your spreadsheets, Dr. Meyer's spreadsheets, for what we're gonna be doing and how we're gonna be doing it and all that, and then you had mentioned about, you know, the board citing the MOUs or knowing about the purchase agreements, and I made a statement, I've seen anything like that, so when I did call ISBA, ISBA was said, you know, you should have policies and procedures in place etcetera, which I do believe there are, that the general operating expenses of the district, yes, that comes, you know, after the fact, they go out the door to stay timely etcetera, totally get that, but when there's major purchases, I know we have a cap on the value, but we're supposed to be being informed of them before they go out the door, according to ISBA, and when I read our reference policy 7400, which is under the financial management authorization and control. and control, the board reserves the right to determine what's in the best interest of the district when it's conducting purchasing programs to optimize the funds. So not micromanaging, but just having a better understanding of what's coming our way.
Well, and we can certainly do that. And some of that, I think you have to understand sort of how the process, how it works.
Right.
Because once we, you know, if we're following our procedures and our practice that we've done for years.
Right.
And if you want to change it, that's fine. But for example, if, you know, we move forward with purchasing, let's say Chromebooks, which is a larger purchase.
Right.
Okay, even each individual item is short. So we could certainly get the quote and like the bus, present that for you and have you approve that quote. And then we could go do the PO. But once we, if that's a process you want, right now, we don't go to the board for that. We have our internal controls and, and just sort of move forward. Now, if you wanted to see some of those that had a dollar threshold, we can do that. But we have to do that before we do the VO. Because once we do the PO and they do the work, we really can't now say we're not going to pay them. They don't work. And that, and you're seeing that after all these other checks and balances have been. So if you want another check in there and control, we can certainly do that. I feel we'll just slow things down a little bit.
Okay, but with respect to that, if we've got school buses that are $90,000 and you just gave us the MOU for, or the NPR or whatever. Okay, thank you. That's, you know, 90,000 times four, so it's $540,000, which is what the Chromebooks were that came through. And the response was, well, no, we're just, we replace those every, you know, and which is understandable because that's in place and they get that. But not having a heads up that, hey, we're going to be expending $540,000 for Chromebooks, but yet the buses, we know every year. So if you are fully aware that these expenditures are coming, if they can be presented like the buses in ample time, not to slow the process down, that would be extremely beneficial just as a trustee to know, okay, good, I see how the money's going to be flowing out. Where instead of just getting the bills list and then asking questions, because I have no knowledge, because we don't have, in my opinion, I don't have all the pieces in place to know, okay, this is coming down the road. It just kind of gets presented to me. I won't say us, but.
Right, and trustee Thompson, we're certainly willing to do however we want. I mean, at some point, it would have to be, I, I don't want to be in a position where I'm guessing what should go before the board and what shouldn't. So I think if, if we want to do that and be consistent and be helpful for the board, then we could say, is it $100,000 code purchases of 50? What would you like to see? And then as we are getting quotes and as we are doing that work, we have to then get it the next board meeting. Or it would slow things up, that's just the reality. But I think if that's the board's desire, then, you know, we will make it happen.
I don't think that it has to slow the process. It could be part of as soon as, as soon as you have gotten, made the decision on not, not at the RFP level, but at the, at the level that you've made a decision, you're going to make this purchase, even if it's after the PO, we're not necessarily approving it, but just knowing that that is going to be approved, even if it's after the fact. But, but that it's coming and that we understand what it is. Like give, kind of give us a heads up and give the previous, but you know, before it's going to be paid, give us a heads up that there's this large purchase that you'll be seeing on, you know, that we'll be paying in the next round of checks.
Well, and you see, some of this, and that's the, and we can, I guess we can see when we get invoices in, but, you know, for example, we won't be paying that check on the buses till May or June.
Right.
Okay, so the, for example, when we did the Chromebooks, we actually paid that seven months after we anticipated because of delays in production because of COVID. So I guess what I'm saying is that if the board wants information, you know, prior to us maybe ordering things or in that time that trustee Bane's talking about in between ordering or it gets here and stuff, we can do that. I would just like parameters on the sort of, you know, the bumper, so I know the lane that you're asking us to operate.
Right, and I thought the parameter was anything over $15,000 in the prior report, but I could be mistaken on that because I don't have it anywhere to find. Believe that had been told to me at one other time. But respecting that parameter, when you have $34,000, $24,000, $48,000 invoices for two to three months, all on carpet, it would be nice to just know, hey, we're spending $100,000 this year on carpet. Here you go, so that you know this is going out the door. Because I know in previous board meetings, I've asked questions and I've been told, you know, well, it's below the threshold, it doesn't need prior approval. And so I, please understand, I'm not trying to make anybody's job more difficult. I just don't like the perception that because we're asking questions, it's then received as micromanaging when all it is, is I'm trying to get enough information to make an informed decision and to just approve something because I've been given it and it's after the fact. It's hard for me to get a reminder on that with some of the dollar values that are on that bills list, knowing that I didn't even have a heads up that we had this expenditure coming down the road.
Right, and trustee Thompson, I, again, I have no problem providing that information to have making the board more comfortable. And, you know, if $50,000 is sort of the threshold, any single purchase above or whatever, I, I'm just saying that, you know, for me, I'm going to be more comfortable that your expectations are being met. And so I would just need that expectation, you know, what do you guys want? And we'll make it happen.
Okay. Thank you, I do appreciate it.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, well, we'll make it work for sure.
Can we add another to the policy 7400, financial management references, a policy and procedure that we don't have, which is.
7405.
Yeah, 7405P.
Yeah.
Yep, and 74. Okay, and 7405? Okay.
Does anybody have any more discussion on that policy 7110 or purchasing expenditures? Do we have more input for future agenda items? And I'm stating that I know that no parameters have been given to you. We'll just, we'll probably put it up for action or look at policies to see if there's something in our policies that would give you the parameters to work with. Okay. I'm not ignoring you.
Well, no.
You're correct.
Yeah, I think we'll find it out.
Perfect, thank you. Is there input for future agenda items?
I would like to discuss Policy 3005 and the fact that it requires or it outlines that we are supposed to get a report of open enrollment requests.
Okay. And here's, so this is the last section of that policy, is the evaluation of policy. Annually, the superintendent shall report to the board the effectiveness of policy. His report should include the number of open enrollment requests accepted or denied by each school, the reason for denial, and any unanticipated results on this policy. Okay. I requested that, I requested that information at the last board meeting. Agenda on that, so.
So you didn't receive, you didn't receive an email from Chrissy, all of you?
No. Oh, you're talking about this.
She did, she gave all, you all that information?
Just as a second verification, if it was sent to the general board mail thing, we discovered this week that trustee Bane was not on that board list. So I corrected that with the appropriate parties. So I will ask Chrissy to resend that information to trustee Bane.
I don't know, it does show that Randy should have received it. I don't know if I corrected.
If you look in board members.
Yeah, it shows Randy Bane.
Yeah, it should have been today.
But it was just received. Oh. Okay, got it. Okay.
And I was trying to clear, I don't, I can follow up after me, but I don't know what you're talking about.
So the mail list, so if you just type in board members.
I just made my own list, so my, I'm fully.
That's why I get your emails, but I don't get anybody else's. So that's cool.
Let me know if you get that. Okay. And you can open it.
Did you just send it for Jeff Thompson?
I did. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Sorry. I just borrowed a few. Thank you. No, respectfully, this is, I don't know that this would answer or address or reply to the 3005. I think that would take a little bit more input from you instead of just looking at the spreadsheet.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So just to clarify, is there still a request to review that policy?
I would say yes.
Okay. And discussion in the future, is that what you're asking? A discussion, a discussion point in the future on 3005? Not, not policy, but now I have more questions regarding this report, so now that I have it, so.
All right.
Okay, so then. I have one thing we do need to follow up on because, sorry, I didn't cut you off, but trustee Rezo, that.
Oh, yeah.
ISBA, is that supposed to be done by October? Are we supposed to hear something?
No, except that it was probably in push-up, don't know.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, we can just keep that project for the, if we have to redraw the boundary lines for the trustee's zones. I think we should follow up on that. ISBA, then we'll have.
Any other items for the discussion? For me to capture, to refer to my, if these items below, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session per item code 742061B.
Executive session per item code 742061B.
I'll second that.
All right, we'll call or roll call them, please.
Trustee Bane.
Yes.
Trustee Bane.
Jeff Thompson. Yes.
Trustee Chris.
Yes.
For Jeff Thompson, please protect the board information on the chief of defense and the teachers that are present in the session.
Perfect. I have to go. I have to say.
Forgot to lock the front door again. Remember we said that we look safer if we lock the door?
Oh, yeah.
Because we're all here women by ourselves.
We're being recorded. Get back on.
All right, so we've come out of executive session and I will entertain any motions at this time.
I would like to make a motion to allow certified employee 09232021D to be released from their contract with the stipulation that a letter of abandonment of contract will be sent to the Professional Standards Commission.
Girl seconded. Hearing a motion in a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. For the motions.
I move that the board approve for Dr. Meyer to provide a letter of recommendation to employee 0923.2021E. I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That concludes our meeting. It's 8:45.